Evening, welcome to the January 7th, 2021 Special Board Meeting of the Southeast Delco Board of Directors. At this time, I ask to be stand to salute the flag and have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States, under God, in the name of the Lord. Thank you. Mr. Butler, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may, Madam President. Mrs. Adney?
Present.
Ms. Harris Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Monroe?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Mrs. Peter Coe is excused. Ms. Woodfolk?
Present.
Ms. Crawley?
Present.
Mr. Fowler?
Present.
Mr. McBride?
Present.
Mrs. Irons?
Present.
Dr. Winder?
Present.
Mr. Diorio?
Present.
Mr. Butler, present.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Brenda Winder. Dr. Winder, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I am going to begin right with our presentation as soon as Mr. Kitchen turns it over. Before I begin, I would like to thank our School Board of Directors for consenting to schedule a special meeting to review our status in regard to the reopening plan. We all recognize that this journey has not been easy. However, as the school board, you have worked to make your vote count for doing what is best for students. Also, I would like to thank the district staff and administration for all the work they have done to help our students succeed during this unprecedented time. As we review the presentation, feel free to ask questions on each slide. So the first thing that we will have is each of our committees have met numerous times to complete tasks that will make our reopening plan a smooth transition. The slides that will be coming, most of them have been viewed before. Um, we're just giving you a recap. First, we have our Cleaning and Sanitizing Committee. Mr. Ovonten and Ms. Willis are the captains of that team. And we see that all of their items have been completed, training for the custodians and other staff, installation of the plexiglass and signage at the schools. All the guidelines have created into a binder. Additional supplies have arrived. Um, they have provided PD for the staff on October 12th. Delivery and installation of our hand-free water fountains, delivery of air purifiers and installations of those purifiers. Any questions concerning the cleaning and sanitizer? Next, we have our Transportation. Mr. Butler, Mr. Kraus, and Mrs. Rose are over that committee. Things that have been completed, the guidelines for bus drivers and monitors, uh, parent communication letter, guidelines for sanitizing and disinfecting the buses. Guidelines for labeling the seats on the buses, guidelines for handling students that have symptoms. Things to be completed, which are contingent upon, um, the decisions that occur tonight is designating the bus routes and communicating with parents in regard to pick up and drop off. And those things cannot be completed until we have a decision. Any questions on this slide? Next, we have Staff and Student Health. Dr. Ryan, Mrs. Burke, and Mrs. Peterson are the captains on that committee. Um, the guidelines for creating staff and student high health risks have been completed. Protocols for protecting and monitoring high-risk individuals, our visitor procedures, guidelines for quarantining staff and students. Plans for supporting staff and students' social wellness. Um, we have a company that has committed to staffing the isolation room. Um, guidelines for returning to school and work after quarantine, and those are given to us by our Chester County Health Department. The only thing to be completed would be the global call prior to the start of in-person instruction. Any questions? Next, we have our Social Distancing and Other Safety Protocols. Mr. Roundtree, Dr. Ryan, Mr. Newcomer, and Mrs. McDevitt are the captains of that particular team. Um, the guidelines for limiting sharing of materials and supplies, um, has been established. Guidelines for storing student textbooks and materials. Um, we are have established that the student cohort reentry plan to come in, and that will be discussed later. Um, plans for conducting informational sessions for our students and families. Uh, we have had two parent-student advisory meetings to discuss our plan, K-8 specials and movement of students throughout the building. Um, we have had four visits to out-of-district high schools to gain ideas to help with our Academy Park High School. Guidelines for handling students who refuse to wear masks. Um, and things to be concluded is the date needs to be determined by the School Board of Directors for reentry. And a plan for a virtual academy that is in progress. We have taken our survey to find out how many parents um, are interested in their students being in the virtual academy. We have also surveyed our staff. And as we finalize the date of return, then we would be able to do more with that particular, um, project. Any questions? We worked diligently and met many times to, um, determine a suggested cohort configuration. We have, um, come up with our hybrid. Week one would be our low-incidence students, self-contained, special education students. Night Academy, all grades and students on in grades K to 2 and 9. Week two would be students in grades 3 to 5, 10, and 12. And week three would be all students. Uh, we are using the colors, our school colors, silver and blue as the determination of our two cohorts. Silver students will come Monday and Tuesday. Blue students will come Thursday and Friday. Our AC cleaners day will be on Wednesday. That way, we can do a deep cleaning of the building between the two cohorts. So all staff will be, um, home that day, working virtually so that our cleaning crew can make sure everything has been cleaned for the new cohort. Um, we will assign the students to silver or blue, but we will do our best to honor any parent requests um, as long as we can continue to social distance. Any questions? Our last committee was surveys for staff and student assignments. Mr. Wilson and Mr. Kitchen were in in charge of this particular group. I left up the survey from the first time. Um, and we had the staff survey was completed and analyzed by district and schools. And I will be showing you that as well as including the one that we did this time. The guidelines for determining staff assignments has been established. Um, we have distributed two student and family surveys. We have distributed the results of the student and family surveys to the administration. Um, we have talked with our teachers to determine who is interested in being our virtual teachers, and we have gotten our approval for pattern intermittent leave. The only thing to be, um, completed is continued planning for substitute shortage. As we know, um, in the entire state, there is a substitute shortage. And each district is doing their best to accommodate their particular staff. Any questions? In our first staff, um, survey, we had 19 staff members that did not plan to return. Eighteen were teachers and one was an instructional assistant. However, 63 staff members were eligible for FFCRF. Um, but we need to note that the First Family Coronavirus Response Act employee paid leave expired on December 31st of 2020, and there has not been an amendment. The second survey, 39 staff members said they did not plan to return for in-person learning. Thirty-five were teachers and four were instructional aides. Currently, eight staff members are in a conditional state because these staff members have to determine or figure out the health needs of a family member, personal health, or the status of their child or children's school schedule. In entirety, 131 staff members are interested in teaching the virtual classes if the district is hybrid. Any questions? On the left, you have the student and family surveys from our first, um, survey. We had 3,037 responses. And that was in October, which was a great amount of responses, and we were very, um, appreciative of our parents for taking the time. And the second response, there was 3,261 responses, which was another 224 more than the first time. Um, thank you to our administrators for going through, checking all responses and eliminating duplicate responses for the same student. Um, if you look at those in favor of hybrid, it was 56.7% in favor of virtual was 43.3%. Um, and then, of course, there are about, um, 800 or so that did not respond. So when we look at that, we would consider this just about a 50/50 split. Any questions? So at this time, we are going to, um, look at our options. We are looking to do what is best for our students, our staff, and our families. This chart was displayed before, um, just showing you the criteria for, um, rating schools as low, moderate, high, or substantial in a district in in regard to the PCR test positivity rates and the incident rates per 1,000, 100,000. So in order to be considered low, then you would have less than 5% in your percentage rate of positivity. Moderate was between 5 and 7%, and high is from 10% and above. So let's look at our district's data for the last five, four weeks. So week four would be from December 14th. Um, we were in substantial. We had 322 incidents per 100,000, and our percent positive rate was about 28%. Week three was very similar, which was December 21st. Week two, um, we see an increase. That was the week, December 28th, which was after the holiday. We had risen to 35.05%. Week four, which was the last current week, which is this week we're in now. Um, at the beginning of this week, right after the New Year holiday, we had risen to 38.24%. Um, and we are still in substantial. When we look at the Pennsylvania instructional model, um, we definitely qualify for virtual all, um, four of those weeks. Any questions? Things that we need to consider, and, um, one is that on the transmission table, we are in substantial. Um, number two, that, um, the Pennsylvania transmission table supports us being virtual. Number three, many districts will have returned to hybrid. Number four, our students have not attended in-person learning for 10 months. Any questions? So the call to action is to select the best choice for the students and staff of the Southeast Delco School District. This is not an easy decision, but it is a decision that will have to be made. As administrators and a cabinet, we, um, tried to come up with four options for the board to consider, and we will review the pros and cons of each of those options. Note that January the 19th is not on the end of selection because if you look at January the 4th, we are in substantial. So therefore, within three weeks, we will not qualify to have moved down to high or moderate. So our first option is February the 1st. Uh, February the 1st, there are pros that the students will be back into class sooner. Um, decisions can be reviewed January the 21st because that is our committee of the whole meeting. If our data shows that there would need to be a change. This is the first day of the second semester, and some parents, that 56% that want to see us hybrid would have satisfaction. Um, and then the last group will return to school before the progress reports are issued. The cons of February the 1st is that it will be flu season, um, possibly inclement weather, and the positivity rate may still be in the substantial range since we are only about three and a half weeks out. Any question about option one? Option two, um, we patterned that to be a two weeks later. Um, and the pros of that one is that decisions can be reviewed January 21st or January 28th in our committee of the whole or in our business board meeting if the data has not changed. It would be more time for the COVID positivity rates to have decreased. There will still be some parent satisfaction, and it will give us more time to notify the parents and the staff of our plan to return. The cons is that the last week would return after our progress reports for the third marking period. Still in a window of inclement weather, and we would still be in flu season. Any questions? Option three. Options three is for March the 1st, about two weeks after February 16th. Um, this decision can be reviewed February 18th or February 25th in our committee of the whole or board business meeting. Um, if this option is selected, the students will be able to participate in spring sports. Um, the cons of this is that the first cohort will begin the week of progress report. Spring break is March 29th. The last cohort begins two weeks before spring break, March 15th. And students will have missed a year of in-person schooling, being that it was last March when we, the pandemic started for our area. Any questions? The final option, option four, is for April 5th. Um, this decision can be reviewed March 18th or March 25th in our committee of the whole or board meeting. The cons are first cohorts begin the last week of the third marking period, the first day after spring break, and the positivity rates may have increased. Um, students will have been home too long and may not return. We may come to school, but parents may choose to say, um, it is just too late. They won't be returning. Um, the last cohort would return April 19th, which would mean there would only be seven weeks left in school. And students will have missed over a year of in-person schooling with option four. Any questions? So we are now at the time where the board can discuss options, and the president will ask for motion on return dates. In order to be approved, a return date needs to have five votes. Once again, the dates are February 1st, February 16th, March 1st, and April 5th. I will now turn it over to Madam President Irons and Secretary Butler to accept, um, motions and do votes.
Thank you, Dr. Winder. I thank you for your, uh, presentation. I do have one question. Um, the slide that you had saying that 39th Senator staff, staff members, uh, 35 being teachers do not plan to return. Would we have enough subs to fill those 35, um, teacher positions?
We do not have enough subs, but some of those teachers that will not return, um, are are able to work virtually. So, um, we would have to look at the criteria that has been set for virtual instruction and kind of do a match off from there based on certification and, um, requirements that would need to be filled.
Okay.
And it's, and each district has is really experienced this situation.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions before, um, I ask for a motion?
So I have two questions. One, are we taking questions from the public?
Yes.
And then two, it is, is seniority playing a role in a teacher? So for me?
That's a good question.
If I say I'm not, I can't come in, and I have less seniority than somebody else, but I have a health condition, then what?
So medical is the first criteria. We have to, um, looking at, um, ADA, we have to start with medical situations.
So then the question becomes, and this might be for Bob, if I have more seniority than the person who has medical, like for instance, for me, I have medical conditions. And I'm supposed to go into the building medically. I have a doctor's notice saying I cannot go into the building. If I'm, if I'm another teacher and I have seniority over me, could anything legally happen? That's, I just want to make sure we're covered on it.
I, I think the medical condition, if it's legitimate, has to trump seniority. I mean, we don't have any other choice.
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, good question, but no, I think medical trumps the, uh, I'm sorry to use that expression, medical. Bedtime, sorry folks.
Um, and then, Madam President, there are multiple questions, um, addressed to the board.
Uh, Dr. Winder, do we take the questions now?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Use that to help you make your determination.
Okay, uh, Ms. Monroe, you have the floor.
Okay, um, I will start with the first one. So this is Christopher Fleming, 207 Falkirk Avenue, Falkirk, PA, 19032. My question is, if we don't know until this meeting what your decision is, how then can we ask the appropriate questions? When will you ask questions based on your decision that you've just made public tonight?
So he's asking, how can you?
How many questions on the presentation that was just presented tonight?
Because the presentation has been, was put on the website on Monday for everyone, as well as an all-call went home last night reminding people that we announced back in December that this would be the night. And hopefully, the questions that you're getting now will help you as you are making your decision.
Okay, Mr. Fleming, again, Christopher Fleming, I've already stated his mailing address, um, which I'll do again for the record at 207 Falkirk Avenue, Falkirk, PA, 19032. I've checked, I have checked the school website almost every day since for updates about meetings and possible reopening of other news. Today, as of January 5th, when I just saw the revised reopening plan. Why are you just posting this today? I should, I should say maybe you posted it a day or two ago, but what am I wondering is where is the communication with parents? No phone calls advising us of the intent to delay reopening once again. How long have you known you were going to delay? Why not tell us as soon as you intended to do it? I've asked before, and I'll ask again, why is it that the school literally right down the road from us can be open, but our school can't? Why do these kids get an unfair advantage over the kids and the rest of the children of this school district? There is no way you can look at any parent in the eye and say that our kids are receiving adequate education. Some children are having to share computers so they can't attend live classes. I keep hearing from the board that you understand, but there is no way you can understand because if you truly did and really wanted, wanted to provide our kids with the education they deserve, the education that you are still taking our tax dollars for, then the school would be open. This year has been dumpster fire. I will say that the teachers have been good. At least the ones that have live classes. I still try to understand what the special teachers do. They had no live classes, no interaction with kids at all, and yet still want them to turn in assignments. How is that teaching anything? I understand we are living in a pandemic. I understand that your goal is to keep everyone safe. But when are you, when are you using matrix that can never be achieved? How do you ever expect to open schools? If I'm reading your revised reopening plan right, for us to go back to hybrid, we would need no greater than. we would need no greater than eighty incident rate per one thousand or less than ten percent of the PCR test positivity. As of January, we are at thirty eight point twenty four percent PCR positivity rate. It seems to me that there was, there was never any real intention of going back in per- in person. Has there ever been a point since school has been closed where we were at least at ten percent positivity? Please, I would just love for you to be honest at this meeting and tell us if you think we are going back to school this year, or ever for that matter. Our kids have been out since March, and that is to be, to me, unacceptable. This school board has failed our children and with no coming up with a realistic plan at all, continue to fail them every day.
So, um, there are a couple of questions that I can answer and then the rest were statements. So, the plan was posted on Monday, which was what our sunshine guidelines require of us. Um, no decision has been made for them to not return or to return. That's what tonight's meeting is about. Um, we've been announcing this meeting since our last meeting in October. It, we, uh, said that this meeting was coming. I'm not sure why, um, that particular person has not been aware. Yes, we have had less than ten percent, but it has not been lately. And those guidelines are established by the health department, not the school district.
I have a question to what, uh, Ms. Monroe just read from Mr. Fleming, um, saying that the special teachers, um, don't go live. Now, is that at the elementary school? Because I know for a fact that special teachers go live at the high school. And that's just because, you know, for me, being over at the high school, I definitely know, I've seen some, Ms. McCauley, I've definitely seen everything that she does live. Um, I saw that in back to school night, so.
That is at the elementary.
At, and and why don't the special teachers go live?
Um, due to the time and the amount of stuff that they're trying to give the students at the age that they are, um, they've kind of done more of projects. Because on one hand, we have a few parents that are concerned about not having specials, but we've had many more parents concerned with, you know, I need my children to be able to understand the math, the science, the social study, the English. And there's not enough time to do it all when I have three or four kids in, in this house or two or three kids in this house. So that was the reason why we went to that method. And also, our computers came in and we started before the break. We had called over two hundred parents to come get their laptops, and I think maybe sixty of them showed up. And so I talked to Mr. Hitchen today. Um, and each principal was calling specifically to the people because we started with things that were doubled up as we promised, only having one or two laptops, but three or four or more children. And unfortunately, some of them did not come, but we are starting up with them again.
Okay, thank you.
Um, hold on. Next question is from Lisa Baines, one zero three six Springfield Road, Collinville, P A. If we go hybrid and on the, on the days students are in person, that's the question, will there be before and after care? If so, who will be the provider? I heard the district separated ties with today's child.
Um, so we, we, if I'm not mistaken, the, the provider that we went with is willing to come in, they're just waiting for us to open. So there will be before and after care on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, Dr. Ryan, do you remember the name of the?
The knowledge points?
I do. It is knowledge points that have committed to providing before and after care, uh, you know, along with guidelines, once the board decides to open up.
The second question is from Mr., uh, David Casey. Unfortunately, he did not give us his, um, residential address. Rosemary Roster, if I said it right, R O S S I T U R. Rossiter, two two, two two eight Lafayette Avenue, Collinville, P A, one nine zero two three. I have two, two children in the district. The oldest in second grade at DTS, the youngest at the K Center. And while I would love them to be in school with their teacher and friends, I will not be sending them back in February, even at in hybrid capacity. We watched COVID cases rise in our area in early December following Thanksgiving. This week into next week, I feel confident that, I feel confident there will be a higher number again because of the December holiday. Chester County, um, Health Department has not yet announced uh, when phase one B of vaccinations will start, which includes educate educators slash staff. She gives us the link. Is there a plan to administer vaccine to educators as support staffs that will be coming back into the building eventually? By no means am I saying the district learning transition is. Somebody had a question? By no means am I asking, am I saying the district learning transition is or was easy for our family, other families or the staff? Without getting personal attached is a photo of my daughter's goal for twenty twenty one. She wants to walk her teacher to school kindergarten. In reality, she's likely never attended the K Center in person. But if we, if we're wise, she'll be able to attend DTS with her brother and cousin in the fall of twenty twenty one. It is our responsibility as a community to keep others safe. I urge you to protect our educators and support staff. February is too soon. I M O dash three slash one should be tentative. Date for hybrid return to be discussed again slash reevaluated at the February meeting.
So, um, we have met, um, as a superintendent group and I about the vaccine for our county. We have an emergency meeting tomorrow. The link was sent out this afternoon. Um, we've been meeting with Jean Castner, who is at the, at the Chester County Health Department to get some dates, um, established. I sent a link out to all of our staff so that, um, and while they're trying to determine if they're gonna do it as a district, they could at least get their name on the list as an individual. Um, so that while we're waiting for something to be determined, because you don't have to live in the district that you go get the vaccine. You just have to be, just have to qualify. So if another district, Montgomery County, is having one, you can get yourself on that list. So I ordered the link as soon as I got.
The next email, Scott Tisha McMillan, three one, excuse me, two one three West Bridge Road, Glen Oden, P A, one nine zero three six. I have a few questions about the reopening plan for school. One, will the, will the kids be required to wear uniforms? Two, if the kids go back to school two full days and one, I have virtual day on Wednesday, what about the other two days? Will the kids be given work to do? Three, my child is in the first grade. Will there be a time for parents and students to visit the school prior to in-school sessions? And four, will there be aftercare available for those kid, for those, these kids are in school?
So the uniforms, the board, um, voted two months back that we would not have uniforms for the rest of this year. And they revisit that for our twenty one, twenty two school year. Um, we recognize it is very late to ex- be expected to try to get uniforms for students. Um, in-school visits will be very difficult because trying to keep social distancing and sanitizing, um, we will be looking to only have those persons that need to be in the building in the building. Um, the best that could happen would be a, um, teacher doing a Zoom from the classroom would be about as all we could accommodate because we definitely don't want to, um, bring the virus to the building by just having unlimited amount of people coming throughout the building. Um, and we already answered that there will be chatter.
This is Francina Barkley. Uh, uh, she lives at four one eight Lafayette Avenue in Collinville, P A. She has two children, they attend the township school. After reading the reopening plan, I have concerns about teacher distribution within the district. And my question is in regards to that. How do you plan to distributing certified teachers throughout the district when we have thirty, when we have thirty five that say they are not returning and some that are unsure? How do we account for that loss? All while making sure the hybrid model stays a true hybrid model? Less teachers mean more kids per classroom. Negotiating the preferred size of a hybrid model. Do we plan on using uncertified substitute teachers for a service? Also, do we think at this point, changing teachers and having substitutes benefit our children's education as well as our transitioning difficulties?
So as we talk about during the plan, um, although some of the teachers will be virtual, about fifty percent of our kids are now saying they're gonna be ver- virtual as well. But we do know that thirty five staff members is not half of our teaching staff. So it's actually about ten percent of our teaching staff. So, um, we will, um, we started meeting today as an administrative team. Um, and each one had to give us a draft of their plan so that we could look and review, um, what they've given us and how it would pan out based on who they know has said they won't be returning and who will. Um, so we are ahead of the game before we even get a date of return, looking to ensure that we can do as much as possible to have our, um, school's staff with certified staff.
Okay, the next question is for, unfortunately, I can't read this one. This is from Emily Davis. Um, because they have no address here. This is from Patrick McGwent, McGwin. Am I saying that right? Uh, Madam President?
Is it Patrick McGowan?
McGowan.
Yes, McGowan.
Thank you. Patrick McGowan is at four twenty one Clinton Avenue, Shine Hill, P A, one nine zero seven nine. I would like to know the status of the new laptops that were ordered in August that we were told should get here in late September, early October. I currently have three students, two who are in high school and in the same advanced placement classes, and they are all sharing one computer. I have not seen or heard anything about the new laptops. Also, I would like to know when the last time the laptops that were handled, handed out were audited by your I T department, because on the laptop that was given out, we just received a message from one of the programs that the license expired as of twelve thirty one, two thousand twenty. Has the full, has a full I T audit been done? One, done one or all laptops that were given out and licenses pursuant for each of them? I look forward to your answer on tonight's meeting.
Okay, so we've answered the first part, but I will check with the administrators at the high school to see if that particular family was on the list and contacted. We did get the laptops one, um, week before we went to break. And our principals and assistant principals helped detect, um, team to unbox them, categorize them and, and started calling, as I said, two hundred families, and only about sixty showed up. But I cannot, um, validate if Mr. McGowan was on the list. I will have to check on that piece. And yes, all of the laptops were checked. Um, however, we do have some software where companies, um, discontinued as of December thirty first. So, um, that is why you will see some of them have expired and the teachers are using other materials instead of that because they no longer even offer that particular software.
Um, next one is William J. Lighter, Junior, seven thirty one Spoo Street, Tallinn, P A, one nine zero two three. Dear South Del- Sudelco School Board members, thank you for all of your care, hard work and dedication shown to our district students and family through this last year. I am, I am among the many dads learning to homeschool, homeschool teachers after job loss from the pandemic. I value that it has been a year of learning for you as it has been for me. As partners in this labor of love and education and empowerment of our students, I salute you and support you. In the, in past years, I have coordinated many volunteer tree planting projects involving the families of Sudelco, some of which have taken place on our or near the district's campuses. These states, these state stabilized trees were purchased by Collinville Barrel and provided through the region N G O. Supporting notion that living in or near green spaces and spending as much time as possible in both natural settings and cultivating gardens can improve mood, reduce the negative effects of stress, encourage physical activity and other positive behaviors, improve cognizant, reduce aggression and enhance overall well-being in people of all ages under many different circumstances. In acknowledgement of, of our students' many emotional challenges, I am willing to go to coordinate in partnership with Sudelco a spring tree planting day to aid in the emotional health support to our students and families. If the district agrees to this and it agrees to this and agrees to this is in an area of concern for our students, I am happy to help develop and export safe event that would concur with Earth Day weekend this April. Can this topic be presented at this week's board meeting? I'm available during reasonable hours of office discussion at my phone number provided below.
So if you would just forward that information to us so that we can look into it and make contact with Mr. McGwin.
All emails that have been read will be forwarded. Thank you. Um, and that concludes all emails that had a, um, residential address. Once again, Madam President, if we can reiterate how they are to send emails so that their emails can be read for the public. And they have, uh, the next board meeting to resend the email if they do not have an address so that it can be read again.
So can you, uh, provide the public with the email address, Ms. Monroe?
So if you have a comment or concern concerning the district or your child, um, there are multiple steps. The first step is to address the child's teacher first. Um, give them time to actually respond back to you. Um, try to set up a conference call, a Zoom meeting at this point during the pandemic since we can't come and build things. If you are unsatisfied at that point, the next level you will go is to your school principal. Um, had, tries to have a meeting with them, talk to them about it. Um, once that has been reached and if you feel satisfied, then that's the end of the correspondence. However, if it has not been satisfied, then you can send the email to, uh, one of the administrators, um, at the time. So believe academics, uh, learning will fall under Mr. Roundtree. Is that correct or? Yes, the round, yes.
Yes.
Uh, once you set up a meeting call, you tell Mr. Roundtree all the steps you have already, what I previously stated, have, um, addressed. We trust in Mr. Roundtree. Mr. Roundtree will do his due diligence as each principal and teacher should be doing. Um, and then. And then if you're not satisfied, then you can go to Dr. Winder. If you're not satisfied with Dr. Winder, same steps, then you bring it to the board. If you have concerns about anything on the agenda posted on the website, then you can send the concerns to the board. And it is board@sudeco.org. If you do not put your residential address slash your mailing address, then we can acknowledge your email. Once again, there were a few emails tonight that did not have a residence slash mailing address. And so I was not able to read them. We still have a meeting this month, so if you would like your email read, then I ask you to resend your email with the proper information included. Also, this information is provided on the district website. First page, if you have any concerns for the board, it has the board email address there and it also states that you must include your residence slash mailing address for your comment or concern to be acknowledged. And that is to all employees, residents, and individuals who conduct business with the school district. Is that correct? Right, Mr. Diorio?
Yes, it is.
Am I missing anybody?
I don't believe so. Residents or taxpayers, yes.
Okay, okay. So that is the process, Madam President. Once again, I'll say one more time, please, when you send emails, please have a residential address slash mailing address, and then your emails will be addressed accordingly. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe, and I do appreciate you reading all of our correspondence at the meetings. It really helps. Before we have any motions, are there any other questions amongst the board?
So Mrs. Monroe, Ms. Monroe has sent us all of the emails. And you will, each of the persons on the list, although we have shared the information here, someone from the cabinet will still contact them. Those that did not have an address, we will look in Power School to ensure they are, if they are, are connected to one of our students, we will call them as well to give them personally the information that they've asked about. And so these calls, we usually say forty-eight business hours, so they will be made no later than Monday. Some will be made tomorrow. The rest will be taken care of on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winder. At this time, I'm going to open the floor up for motions on days that we will return back.
Can we have a discussion first, Madam President, before we throw out dates? I will go first. So I will be going for the April fifth date. And the reason why is one that we definitely need three weeks of under the hundred percent over one thousand. And we also need to make sure that parents feel very comfortable sending their children back into the building. There's a new strain, multiple strains are coming out. More people are getting sick. And so I would feel more comfortable with us pushing back to April fifth. We want to make sure that our staff feel safe and comfortable. Because if, as a teacher, if I don't feel safe and comfortable, I cannot be an effective teacher in my classroom giving instruction to other people's children. So you don't want staff members feeling like they're being forced back. Because if you're being forced to do something, then you're not doing it at your one hundred percent. You're not giving your all or putting your heart into it. You're just there to basically get a paycheck. I mean, this is, this is what education is. So I would, I would prefer or suggest April fifth as an educator.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Mr. McBride, you have the floor?
Thank you. I, I feel that we should get back to school as soon as possible, personally. I will look at it more at option two by February sixteenth. That should get us all our laptops up and running, I would hope, and get, get everything coordinated. You know, this pandemic is going to go on no matter what. So we either make a decision to, to, to go back hybrid or not to go back at all. There, there's no way we're going to be able to know what's going to happen with this and how it's going to fluctuate up and down with the new strains, everything that's going on. So, so, you know, I believe that we should go back February sixteenth. And with that, Madam President, I have to apologize. I'm going to have to leave the meeting. I'm sorry, board members. I, I have something that I have to do. So with that, thank you.
I was aware. I was aware. Take care of your urgent business. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Cynthia, you have the floor. I'm sorry, Ms. Woodfolk.
Yes, I do agree with Ms. Monroe. We should wait until April. Our children, our staff, our administration, everybody is important. You know, and should be, should stay healthy. Right now, the percentage is high right about now. I don't want to put any child, I don't want to put teachers, management in jeopardy for health. Because if anything happens, especially to one of our children, you know, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night. So I think that we should come back in April and see how the pandemic is. Is to, I mean, it is sad. I real, I mean, I understand that these kids need this education. But health comes first, point blank period. Health comes first, then education. Because I'm going to tell you straight up, I'd rather have a dumb child than a dead child. So I think we need to think about going back to April instead of February. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodfolk. Anyone else?
Can I ask a question, please? On the other two dates that are in between, which is February the sixteenth and March the fourth. If the, the board decides on any of these dates, even, even April the fifth, could we have, or would it be suggested that we would have a special meeting prior to that date to see how the COVID is doing because they are giving out, administering the, the medicine and stuff now to the teachers and everything? So if the teachers, the educators and everyone receive their inoculations that are, that are there for them, maybe we won't have to wait until April fifteenth because everyone will be, you know, fine to come back to school prior to the last date, which is April the fifth. So if we do any of these dates here, April sixteenth, March one, April five, could there be a special meeting prior to having the children return on that date?
Let me ask you, Teresa, what date, did you say that we should come back and talk about?
I didn't.
Go ahead.
Okay, I didn't say any particular date. I just asked these other three dates that are, that are suggested of options for us. Could we have a meeting prior to that date to see if it's feasible for us to still keep that date as the opening date? If not, then we still have the other two dates that we could fall back on, or the other one date, one or the other.
Yes, and all options were, you were provided two dates that you could meet prior to that option. And we are always open to schedule a special meeting if need be. Whatever date you're selecting tonight, as we discussed back in October, you can always put tentative and come back to reconvene to determine if you feel comfortable.
And that's what I feel more comfortable, whatever date we select this evening, we have the, the verb that it's a tentative date as Dr. Winder suggested. Anyone else?
So with that, I'm going to go with, I'm suggesting. This is January. I'm suggesting March one. By that time, everyone should have gotten their injections and you know, throughout the district as far as our administrators and employees are concerned.
I, I, yeah, I agree. You know, March one is, is a good date, but and, and not only injection because, I mean, we just have to figure out what number we are at, at that time. You know, whether it is high or if it's low around our community. So March first, yeah, I agree with that.
I as well feel that March first, it could be our tentative to date. And then see, we can reconvene and see how, like we did tonight. See where we're at on March first. That's just my feeling. Anyone else before we take a motion?
Yes, thank you. I agree, March first, after listening to parents and my colleagues, I believe March first would be a great tentative date. I'm also thinking we should consider having our children and our staff tested, those who desire to come back into the building, to bring back with them a negative test result. That is my suggestion.
Thank you, Mrs. Abney. Anyone else? Okay, so do I have a motion on the floor? Do I have a motion to return March first, twenty twenty-one as a tentative date to return? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I do something wrong, Mr. Butler? I'm sorry.
No, no. If you don't mind, I'd just like to just review the dates that were, that were talked about in order. So date number one was was, and that was recommended.
I'm sorry, yes, it was. It was first.
Yeah, by Ms. Monroe. The second date that was recommended was February sixteenth. That was recommended by Mr. McBride. And the third date that was recommended would be March first, and that was recommended by Ms. Harris Johnson.
Okay, so I have to do them in, in order as they come, like how we do? The president, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Monroe, I'm sorry.
Madam, madam, madam President? I, I think you only have to deal with a motion on the floor. If, if you want, if somebody makes a motion for each particular date, then, then there has to be a vote on that motion. But so far, I haven't heard a motion that's been seconded for any particular date. So one of the members would have to make a motion, another member seconded, and then vote on that one.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the floor for any of the dates?
Motion on the floor. The motion was for March first. It was multiple.
This vote for March first, that's correct.
Yes, for March first.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Cynthia, you just voted twice for the motion.
I did, yes. Well, she said, I said nay. So, I mean.
No, you either is yes you're for it or nay you're not for it.
For the March first date.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm for it. Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
So it's only one nay from Ms. Monroe.
Okay, let's review the, the motion again. The motion was from who?
Yeah, shall we, she, Ms. Abney, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Abney. And the second?
Do we need to take a roll call vote or? And the one nay was Ms. Monroe.
Oh, you have a six one.
So, so our tentative date would be March first, twenty twenty-one.
And Dr. Ryan will send out, I mean, all call for the families to make sure they are aware.
Yep, it'll be the same structure as the one when we, the board had voted for January nineteen.
Do I have any more questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure for March first, when was the review date? You already said that earlier.
Yeah, it's in the packet, hold on.
It's in the package.
Ms. Monroe, hold on one second.
Eighteenth or February twenty-fifth?
We didn't pick any date yet.
They haven't picked any date.
So are we picking it tonight or we just going to wait until it gets closer?
You can do it tonight. Have their calendars where the availability is there for those, either one of those things? No, but I'm needed for them to be there for this.
So is it going to be the fifteenth or the eighteenth?
The eighteenth or the twenty-fifth is, are the two dates. February eighteenth or February twenty-fifth?
Let's go for the eighteenth. Yes.
At six P M?
Yes.
Yes, that's committee of the whole night anyway.
Okay, great. Makes it even better. So again, to the public, our next update will be February the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M, which is also a committee of the whole night. Any more comments or concerns? Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.